It being 6:30 on April 7, 2021, I'm going to call the planning board meeting to order. And we are meeting virtually due to the governor's emergency order number 12 that waived the location requirement of the public officials at a public meeting. The meeting is being conducted via Zoom and the Zoom connection information was on the agenda and on the town website. The tonight's meeting is a joint meeting of the planning board and the zoning board. And let me explain that just a little bit before we go into our first part. By according to the rules of procedure of both the planning board and the zoning board, and according to the RSA, planning boards and zoning boards can hold joint meetings. And when it is a planning board and zoning board joint meeting, it is the chair of the planning board that is in charge of the the meeting process. What we're going to be doing today is first, the planning board will, as I just did, open the meeting. And in just a moment, I'll take roll call of the planning board. Then the planning board will recess. They will not adjourn, but they will simply recess. And at that point, the zoning board starts their meeting to hear the application for a variance. The zoning board goes through their their normal process. They open the meeting, they accept the application, they open their public hearing, and during which they hear the presentation from the applicant. They hear comments from abutters and other members of the public. The ZBA members can ask questions. Then the public hearing is closed by the zoning board. And the zoning board then deliberates on the criteria for granting the variance that is relevant to this particular case. After they have their discussion, they will eventually vote on each of the criteria. And that will determine whether they grant the variance or not. They then will recess their portion of the meeting. The planning board reconvenes and proceeds then with the site plan application that they have received. And depending on whether the if the zoning board does not grant the variance, the planning board makes a particular statement and so on. Or if the zoning board does grant the variance, the planning board then proceeds with their site plan review process. So first roll call for the planning board. Kathleen DeWolf.
Present.
Paula Hancock.
Present.
And myself, Martine Badger, the chair. Okay, at this point, I am going to recess the planning board meeting. And the zoning board now will pick up its meeting. And just anytime, David, you want me to put anything on the screen, I've got copies of everything here.
Okay, thank you, Martine. I'm going to call the ZBA meeting to order at 6:33 with a roll call vote. Martine Badger.
Here.
Charlie Bazillo.
Here.
And Dave Toth here. I wanted to let Jack McCormick know that you are entitled to have five members of the zoning board present for review of the variance. At currently, we only have three members of the zoning board present and the alternate, our only alternate is not present. Would you like to proceed, Jack, or would you rather wait?
Frankly, we're very, very happy that the boards agreed to do this in the first place. We are very grateful for that having happened. I realize the difficulty these days in boards finding members from every town for every reason. And I have every faith that the three parties here can do a fine job. I see no reason to put this off. We're all here. I'd like to proceed ahead. I have one question proceeding.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jack. Our first order of business is to accept the accept the application for case 2021-02, application for variance for TML 012-002-023, Elbrook Road, owned by Mike Matulip, for a commercial use in a rural residence. Do I hear a motion to accept the application as complete?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, we will have a roll call vote. Martine Badger.
Yes.
Charlie Bazillo.
Yes.
And Dave Toth, yes. Before we begin, I just want to go over our our process. We will first open the public hearing on the variance. The applicant will then make a presentation on the variance. Our process is to have the applicant answer the answer all of the questions that we need to answer for the variance, then we allow the abutters to respond to that. Then we allow the applicant to respond to the abutters, and the abutters, the final chance to respond to the applicants. At that point, we close the public hearing and we deliberate by examining the evidence presented to us on the individual, on the individual questions. We discuss it and then we vote. In order for the application to be approved, two out of the three members have to approve each one of the questions. If if two or more of the ZBA members vote no, then the app on any single one of the questions, then the application will be denied. So I will open the public hearing on the on the application for the variance at this time and ask Jack McCormick to present the applicant's case.
Well, thank you very much. I have one question first. I realize some of the information being given to each board is a bit overlapping in some respects. Am I to assume that both boards are listening now? Or are we expected to potentially do this twice in terms of presentation?
Both boards, as far as I can tell, everyone is listening. Yes.
You very much. Thanks.
And and Jack, if, as I said to David just a minute ago, I have copies of all the documents that I can put up on the screen. So if you want something put up, let me know.
It might it might be useful for everyone if you put both the application up and and the site plan as well, so that we can refer to that during the discussion.
The site plan is very helpful. And I assume most all of us here know where the properties we're discussing.
Yes.
Fair assumption.
Yeah.
Thank you. If I may start, for the record, again, I'm Jack McCormick, counsel for the applicant, who is Mike Matulip, seated to my right, and Elbrook Properties LLC, I Nick Byers and Amy, and Nick is to my right over here. The parcel in question is about 1.38 acres and is on Elbrook Road, not too far from three. And that happens to be in the RR zone of this town. Now, the idea here is that Mike would like to convey, thank you, like to convey this parcel property subdivided as it is to Nick's company and Amy's company for purposes of erecting a structure about 45 feet by 50 feet in size with a covered entry. The structure is depicted graphically on the plan. And there were some handouts given before in the form of some renderings as to how it would look. And a Google map Tony ran and put together with respect to the location of the area. If you don't have them now, I assume you've all seen those particular pieces of paper.
I can also put any of those up.
Would you would you put those up, Martine?
Okay.
Thanks.
Let me.
Sure.
You know, I'm not sure the abutters have seen those.
Fine.
Okay. Let me see if I can put a couple things up at a time and then we can flip back and forth. If you can hold just a moment here.
I couldn't do that, Martine. I couldn't find my camera. Go over this.
Let's see. See if I can arrange things a little bit here so we can see everything. I'm not sure if I can share two things at once.
Well, the renderings are somewhat redundant. They're the same thing, so.
Yeah. Okay. Let me pull that up just briefly. Okay, here are the images of the building. I can just scroll down through them.
That's fine for me.
Okay. It's okay. I think this is the the first end as you drive in. The end. Front of the building, I believe, is this.
Yes.
The other end. Another and another image of the far end, and this is the this is the back of it.
That would be the side.
Yeah.
On the roadside, one facing.
Okay, yes, okay, okay.
What is the what is the the view from what is the side that faces the road?
It was that very bottom one.
This one.
Yes.
This one.
Yes. There'll be, I mean, a lot of trees covering between the road and that side. I think it's hard to be visible.
Okay.
Okay.
Can we go back to this and at some point tie the two together?
I'm I'm I can't put two up at the same time. I thought I could.
Let's go back to this.
This is the, let's see, share screen. Okay. Okay, this is the site plan. If you explain this, I can point to things as you're talking about them.
First of all, notice the driveways in such a location, no one's looking up driveway into the building. It's offset to a large degree. And there's a gravel driveway, gravel area around the building and a large, you can see the timber line. That's not precise, but it's a good rendition of what will be taken down. There'd be a lot of timbering left on Elbrook Road and on the side facing Sampson to shield the property from view. And you can see what the colors, it's a very, very dark muted color, intentionally so as to mute the view from the road. It's largely obscure. And there, it's a wooden property. The idea is to leave a natural barrier on as many sides as we can to keep it shielded from public view. And no signs will be there, no commercial overtones, no exterior commercial lighting of the kind you might find annoying. There is nothing to indicate it's non-residential as you go by. I think you can see it all. Now, the Google Earth overlay, which Tony provided.
Okay, let me let me switch to that.
Right.
I'll switch to that one.
Okay. Thank you. That's a good job, Martine. And what it indicates is that the present woodworking shop, you can see, proposed woodworking shop right in the middle. And Tony scaled out the distance from that proposed building to the other structures in the area. You can see this one, the Weiss dwelling is over 100 yards away. And you can see the Swanson dwelling is farther away, 350 feet. And the Swanson property through the woods is 270 feet. So it's not on the road. It's not something to be highly visible. So the nature of the location should be very reassuring to the abutters, neighbors, and to the board. Now, the idea here is that this is going to be used for very few purposes. It's principally a woodworking shop. Nick's business has grown on leaps and bounds, and he's currently in a small location near a yoga studio. And interestingly enough, his operation of being a woodworking shop has never affected the yoga studio. There's no noise being produced. It's a very quiet, clean operation. So the idea is to construct a woodworking shop for cabinetry, custom woodworking, things like that, and a small office. There'd be some wood stacked in the back and vehicles not being used from time to time. We park in the rear out of view. So it's not retail in nature. There's no idea of traffic being increased, nothing like that. Now, in terms of the five criteria, if you'd like me to address those now, I can do that.
I can put those up.
Yeah, I I would definitely like you to do that, Jack.
Okay.
Just to remind the abutters, the the ZBA makes this makes a decision solely on the basis of the criteria that we are going to be looking at. Okay, we we make, we try to make our decision on on objective and factual factual information. And our main concern or really only concern is whether the variance meets the meets the the spirit of the of the zoning ordinances in town.
May I proceed?
Yes, go ahead, Jack.
I'd like to say again that we we all are local people in this room and here. And by that, I simply mean that we we are not developers dropping something and leaving town. We're here, the guys in the room with me are lifelong residents. They are dead yet, but they're lifelong residents of the area. And and they all have a vested interest. They live in the area. They drive by there. It's not drop-down development of done a hazard manner. Having said that, as a judge once said to me, when you walk into a board meeting, you don't need common sense at the front door. You call the fireside equipment. You do the right thing. And you don't want to sell out the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance exists for a reason. But the ordinances are created in a vacuum, and this is real life because nothing ever is quite quite right. So let's be practical and proceed. Now, the first is whether we can demonstrate that granting the variance is not contrary to the public interest. And I'll flip here if I can quickly. Left flipping on camera. We're prepared. And basically, as I cited in my my attachment, the granting of the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because it doesn't alter the basic character of locality or threaten public health, safety, or welfare. And basically, is a very, very basic building. It's quiet. The area is a mixed-use area, whether zoned that way or not. What you have is surrounding this lot on two sides is Michael Tools commercial use. Mike's is a very rigorous, more intensive, but legally standing existing use. And the fellow next door, Mr. Sampson, I believe, and his predecessor have operated some level of commercial activity there. Mr. Sampson is a very talented, small industry repairman, I understand, before that Jeremy Hills was there. So this is a mixed-use area in a de facto sense. This is not something which is devoid of any overtones of that. Now, if you look at the permitted uses, basically, they're not very pretty. If you step back a bit, the agriculture in this particular zone, agriculture is permitted as a matter of right. And that could be farm, if you clear cut and have a farm. And sheep, animals, livestock, all back of the cows, horses, a farm stand. You could have, it's also for timbering. You could have a timber stand. You could have clear cut. You could basically have logs piled there. Those are not pretty or nice uses, but they're allowed in the zone. I would suggest to you, as the underlying thread here, our use is far more benign. No foot traffic. It'll be very, very quiet, respectful, consistent with the nature of the area. This is fear that the ordinance observed. Again, I'm parking to my my prior comments. We think it is uses very low impact, no traffic being generated. As a matter of fact, if you have three teenage kids living in a house, there's far more traffic you're going to have than something like this. So this is not something out of character for the area. It's on the site. It's quiet. Our use is more aligned with the intent of the ordinance. It's not visible. It's it's not consuming services. Hate to say it, no kids are going to school, all the common sense things we know. Now, the next is substantial justice is being done. And that's an interesting one. Basically, I cited some law from the Office of State Planning in my my memo. It's you can't really easily articulate what's justice. Each use must be looked at separately by the board members. But the guiding rule is, is the loss to the individual is outweighed by the gain to the public. If it's not, it's an injustice. So basically, the question is, is it, is it, will our victory be a loss to the public? I say hardly no. Next, the values will not be diminished. Well, again, my take is it's a wash as to values. It would not be, it would not increase values or decrease values, have no effect on any values. It's a nullity. Again, another use allowed, a farm, a stand, cattle, horses, that would have an effect on the values, I guarantee it. We're not. We're not in that same league. Now, the hardship aspect is hard. And I'm going to deviate slightly from my memo and talk about what hardship is and what it what it has become and what we need to prove. Give me one second. Well, actually, I'm going to basically say to you that it seems to me that this is a mixed-use neighborhood in this particular lot butts up against Michael Tools' commercial use on two sides, Mr. Sampson's on one, and there's a highway, a public highway against it. Now, the objective of the ordinance is to protect the misuse of property. The principal use, proposed use, is benign compared to other permitted uses. And the hardship here is what you've got is something very unusual, in my opinion. You have this lot in a mixed-use neighborhood. We've talked about the history of the uses. Again, Mike surrounds it on two sides, the other fellow on the other side. It's not likely you're going to sell this as a residential lot. People are not looking to buy houses in situations like this. Now, the other abutters to us are far removed. No one's going to see us. I think the hardship is that basically we are, this lot is surrounded by commercial, a quasi-commercial uses. It does not let this off for a residence. So I think the hardship is, this is a, this is an orange surrounded by apples. And I think that we need to be reminded of that. In the real world, this lot is best used for this purpose, not residential. It wouldn't fit there. You would never sell. Mike's been in the business for 35 or 40 years. I've been in the business. You're not going to sell that lot for residential purposes. So that's why I think the hardship exists, and we feel that this use is reasonable, and that's the proper standard to apply. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jack. Now we will allow the abutters to respond to Jack's presentation.
Could I, just for the sake of our minutes, when someone speaks, could they please introduce themselves?
Can you unmute, Lisa?
Hi, this is Lisa Weiss, one of the abutters. I wanted to ask whether the written statement was presented and read by the board members.
I do have that, yes. I can put that up also. Let's see.
And should I read it, or do I assume that people have already read it?
I didn't see that. Lisa, I have, unfortunately, I have not seen that, so I would.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate your reading that.
And it should be on the screen right now also.
Yes, it is. And I am not a lawyer and certainly don't have the same level of knowledge as as Jack and the people who've been preparing for this for apparently a while. But maybe I'll just, I guess I don't have to read the whole thing, but we did kind of look into it from a layperson's perspective. Obviously, we are concerned. And I do recognize that we live in a mixed-use neighborhood. And we have six people who live here full time and 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 recognize that it was that way when we bought the home. Well, it was at least when we bought our home. We didn't realize it. We thought we were in a rural residential neighborhood until we walked across the street to introduce ourselves. But that really isn't anyone's fault but our own. However, I I feel like one of the arguments about being in a mixed-use neighborhood is that it was grandfathered in and it was deemed a rural residential zone for a reason. So I'm not sure that that, for me, that one doesn't really seem to be right, for lack of a better word, in that I don't know why we wouldn't have kept it as a commercial use zone if if in the first place. So it is, the intention is to be a rural residential zone. If Mike, my understanding is that if Mike had not subdivided the property, the the rule would have been that he could not have expanded his commercial operation beyond what it was at the time of being grandfathered in when when the rural residential zoning ordinance went into place. So you you can see the the letter we we wrote and our our neighbors, the Swansons, who are on, reviewed it and also agreed to the points here. I will say I attended the November meeting and did raise this concern at that time. And at that time, it's it felt like it was a pretty adamant response by the planning board, I guess it would have been, that this is rural residential. And you can see I copied it out of the notes on the website that the last statement there was that all future development in the area has to be rural residential. And the people at the the meeting, Mike and others, didn't respond about what I think apparently is an intention that was happening at that time, and I suppose legally they didn't need to. But and not that we could have objected and and because it was a valid subdivision application. But I again, just point to that point that they said that all future development would have to be rural residential. So we felt pretty good about that. Anyway, I will say we did look up and see the same points that you just had a much more lengthy and legal description under. We thought we would just indicate for each or for the five points. And I think probably mostly around the the your point, Jack, that that there wouldn't be noise. And this does go back to the fact that we do, we know we live in a mixed-use neighborhood. But there, I I find it really hard to believe that there wouldn't be noise in a in a woodworking shop that is, as you say, for a very growing and prosperous, or whatever you said about about the business. There's sawing and drilling and and pounding and noise travels, as as we all know, even if there are trees. And trucks will have to go in and deliver supplies and have to go out and and deliver product. And just because we already have trucks doesn't mean that having more trucks wouldn't make it more noisy and more of a nuisance. And more and having more work wouldn't make it more of a nuisance and therefore also be more of a impact on property values, which is another one of the. impact on property values, which is another one of the, one of the points there. So I just, I, to me, it doesn't seem like the point about it, we already have two companies there. So adding a third one shouldn't be a problem. Adding a third one increases it to be a problem, even if it's not, you know, increases the noise and traffic, even if it isn't to the level that the other two are. So I would say that, given that it is in a rural residential zone, and it was newly subdivided as rural residential, that property itself, and being closer to the road, it in itself will, will have an incremental effect beyond the current effect of the two companies that are there, that would increase, again, the noise nuisance, the traffic nuisance, and the subsequent impact on property values. Like, it would just be a net, a net increase in those nuisances. I don't think the spirit of the ordinance would not be observed. I mean, I think you already responded to that, Jack. To me, the point about the agriculture and forestry, I I don't, I guess I don't understand as a, as a layperson, why that wouldn't always be the case. Like, why would you even have a rural residential if you could always make the point that a farm would be more noise than a company or a woodworking shop for a growing builder? So that would just be my, you know, response to that piece. And to the last piece about the enforcement of the ordinance would not result in an unnecessary hardship, I would just return back to the November meeting that, given that this property was just subdivided, and at that time, it was clear that, from the planning board, that the future development would be rural residential. I, I find it hard to believe that this would result in an unnecessary hardship to not approve the variance. And I do just wanna close by also agreeing that this is a group of very fine, very nice people. I know Mike has been a nice neighbor, and I've met Nick and know people who know them and know that you all have been here your whole lives. We've only been here 20 years. But, so this is really nothing about, I do agree with you. I think that that group of people is a very fine group of people and would be very respectful. And so I'm not objecting to, to, out of any disrespect for the people. And we really do want to be, you know, thoughtful members of this community. But I just, we are very, we, I think we feel strongly that just more noise and a variance that isn't necessary is not in our quality of life and for our own residences. And I think that Mike and Nick and Amy would feel the same way about someone building across from their home. So that's, that's, I think, all I wanted to say from our, from our own rebuttal, from a layperson's perspective.
Thank you very much, Lisa. Are there any comments from other butters? Hearing?
We are Arvid and Anna Swanson.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I just made, I just made quick notes here. I would just like to say, I mean, for us, like, living here, we've only been here almost 30 years. But for us, like, Hilt's making a vacancy and Sampson coming in has been amazing, because we don't have the big trucks anymore, which used to be, you know, driving across from our house at 5:00 in the morning. So for us, commercial versus residential is, I think, really important. Also, we're parents of kids. And as our kids are growing up, for this to be more of a residential area was really kind of important at that time. I know that our kids are older now, but they would, they actually agree with us. We've talked about this. My one concern is if this is made a now commercial plot of land, you know, what happens if Albrook really outgrows it? That's a small, small, that's a small area to have an actual factory. 1.3 acres is nothing. Because I know that they're gonna have people coming in. They're gonna probably have a type of showroom, I'm assuming, definitely. So for us, you know, it'd be more, it'd be more foot traffic coming in and out. You also have to get supplies. You also have to ship the stuff out. So, I mean, coming across the street from us, I'm looking at Sampson's house right now. And if you look at the plot map, I could definitely see where they're gonna be. I know there's gonna be trees, but wintertime, there is no foliage. So there it is, right there. So, you know, and then what happens when they outgrow? Are they gonna sell it? And now it's a commercial plot of land. So what happens if, I don't know, an oil company wants to come in with their trucks? It's just, it's certain things that, you know, once you deem an area as viable for a commercial zone, there's all kinds of things that can happen. I just wanna say, I have nothing against Albrook guys. I love those guys. They are super nice. We see them every day on our walk. I also don't think that it's very necessary for Mike Latulip to subdivide the property. So that also comes into a legal matter that Jack knows more about than I do. Hi, Jack, nice to see you. The, my one big thing is, you know, if you do make it commercial versus residential, and Jack, as you said, this isn't gonna be sold as a residential plot. Well, what does that mean for our entire road? What does that mean for my house? I mean, if I'm gonna try to sell my house, is it not gonna be sold as residential? So I think that you saying that totally drops my property value right there. So, I mean, that to me is kind of a big thing. I've worked on this house for 30 years. And for me to have this just become a commercial street, Albrook Road becomes a commercial area, really doesn't work well for me viably, you know, when I will the house to my kids or whatever. You know, Mike Latulip, a lovely guy. I love, I love everybody in the area. So, I mean, Mike would never seen him. He has big trucks that come in. It's more for the Wices, because they're across from the road. But Mike is way set back in the woods. I've actually, I told Anna, I've never even seen his facility, to be honest. And, I mean, it's way tucked in. This, this facility is gonna be really close to the road. And for me, commercial, you know, versus residential is now, it's almost taking over our area where we live. So, that's all I got. Those are quick notes. All right.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for expressing those concerns. Any other butters?
I'm Lisa's mom, Eileen Torrey. And my husband's here too, Bill Torrey. And we totally agree with what both Lisa and Arvid said. And it's, it goes to a commercial thing there. I personally know that sawing makes a lot of noise. And, and we like the neighborhood, but we would like to keep it as is.
I agree. Thank you very much. Are there other butter concerns at this time? Now, we will allow the applicant to respond to those concerns.
Thank you.
We will also allow the butters to respond to the applicant's rebuttal. So go ahead, Jack.
Thank you. The good thing about these meetings is we all know each other. And the bad thing about these meetings is we all know each other. So I, we totally understand people's concerns. And frankly, the cast of characters here down that road and in the room here, they're all good people, as you said. Now, Arvid made a couple of comments, I'd like to regress. Hopefully clarify. The effect of a variance is not to spot zone a piece of land commercial. It simply says, look, there's been a variance issued for a very specific reason with very specific limitations. And the variance we're getting is one that this is not a retail facility. There is no showroom. It's a woodworking shop. I don't think there are windows on the roadside, are there? It's a woodworking shop with limited traffic. And so, again, if we wanted to sell the property and somebody else had proposed use, which is different from ours, and I'm sure they would be, then they would have to come in to the exact same thing, demonstrate again of their use appropriately. So there are safeguards are in place to protect against creeping, creeping zoning. And the fact of not being residential, my point was, our lot is not like your lot. We are abutted on three sides by commercial uses or quasi-commercial uses. You're across the street. Driving by our property, no one's gonna know what's going on there. Driving by the Sampson property, no one's gonna know what goes on. Mike is way back in the woods. This is another case where the malls are coming in, like Plymouth-Ten Mountain Highway, which, by the way, this is the agricultural zone. But, so the name of the zone has nothing to do with the uses allowed or there now. So again, respectfully, I would say, this is not opening the door to any creeping anything. This is simply saying, this lot, this trapped lot between commercial uses, is best served by a very, very benign and non-offensive commercial use, in this particular case, in this particular case. Now, Lisa's, Lisa's comments, Lisa, that was a very good presentation. I'm just telling you that the fact that this lot was derived from Michael Tulip's non-conforming lot really is irrelevant. Article 5 of our ordinance allows for the orderly expansion of a non-conforming use. The law does recognize that. Nothing to do with this application. I'm just clarifying this for you. And you say that the subdivision resulted in a lot in the RR zone. The planning board, I'm certain, did not limit the use of the law. They didn't indicate what would occur on the lot. The planning boards don't do that. It's not their job. They allow, they give permission to subdivide. And in fact, they don't limit the use. The uses are dictated by the zoning ordinance and by the ZBA, in a case where the ordinance just doesn't quite fit. So I just simply point out that, again, the name of the ordinance does not dictate what can occur there necessarily. Now, with respect to the questions of noise and trucks, I'm gonna give up my seat to Nick to explain that in more detail. Nick Glass?
Hello, I'm Nick. Amy and I own Albrook Builders and Albrook Properties would like them to purchase this land. We own a general contracting residential home building company here in the, well, obviously, we live on Albrook Road. And we do homes in the Swamp Lake area here. My shop that I currently have, that I've been in for three, over three years, is right here on Winter Street in Ashland. It's just too small. It's 12 by 20. But it is divided by one drywall wall to the yoga studio down here at Mill Number Three. I'm, they hold yoga classes in the same time that I'm in there working on stuff. I've never had any disturbing calls from people just on the other side of a wall saying that we're making too much noise. It's very limited to me and maybe one other person in there making maybe, you know, one set of kitchen cabinets for a particular home that we're building. And then I personally bring my truck, put it in my truck, and haul it out. The how often I am going to my shop is maybe, it's not once a day even. Let's call it five times a week, I might stop there either in the morning or afternoon is when I'm coming or to and from work. I pull in, it's my single pickup truck. I go in, there's some tools that will be stored there. There may be some, you know, maybe one of my job trailers that is currently at my house. Nice-looking 12-foot trail, but you've got around the back, you know, not seen from the roadside. It's just gonna create a small little office for Amy and I to work at up there. And like I say, building with me or one or two of my guys tops ever in the place, working for five or six hours, maybe, you know, one afternoon or something in there to produce some cabinetry. I don't run a commercial cabinetry shop, have no intention of that ever. So, and as far as deliveries go, I mean, I may get, like, you know, a small delivery of some lumber, probably not even once a month. So, I mean, probably 10 times a year, there would be a truck pulling in and dropping off some materials that would be stored inside, outside, not seen from the road. So, I mean, the, the use of our office and woodworking shop is not very heavily. I mean, it's not even daily use of one, one vehicle in there. Just so I wanted to kind of clarify what the use would be. And that's what our use would be there. So I, I mean, I don't see it to be a big disturbance at all. I mean, obviously, I live on the road. Wouldn't want to affect anybody on our road. And we would try to keep it, you know, very quiet and kept to ourselves in there, protected by trees and and I just hope that we'll be able to make this fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are our responses to the other comments right now.
Thanks, Nick and Jack. Do the butters have any responses to what Nick just told you?
Arvid or Anna, did you wanna go first or, or should I go ahead? So sure, thank you, thank you for that. I will start by saying, Jack, that, yes, I, again, I'm a layperson and did not recognize the authority of the planning board versus the zoning board. I was just pulling from the notes that the planning board had posted and, and whether or not they had the right to say it, they, they said that all future development would be rural residential in response to my question. And I didn't know they didn't have the right to say it. So that's all I was pulling from. So I wasn't trying to tell you that what, what the law was. And I think just with respect to the question that Arvid raised, that you responded to, Jack, about future owners and selling the property again, and that you would start over, you would be starting over from a different threshold. You would not be starting over from a threshold of trying to sell it and from rural residential to a company. You would be starting from a threshold of selling it from commercial use to another company. So I, I would find that hard to believe, that that would, wouldn't be an easier bar to, to jump for, for someone coming in next. And, and, and yes, I do recognize, thank you for educating me on the, what I guess it was, the mall or something that was agricultural. Yeah, I definitely wouldn't, I would definitely prefer this over a mall. What I'm comparing to is what we have right now. And so what I'm saying is that, you know, just compared to what we have right now, this is an incremental increase in, in noise. And I do, I do understand what you're saying, Nick, about how you're using it right now and what, you know, the, the amount of work you're doing right now and the, and how you intend to do it right now. But this is day one, and this variance is permanent as long as you're there. And so we don't know how that's going to change over the years as you grow and as your business grows and you, you know, you may have, you know, you don't know, like, five years from now, you might have 12 people coming and working there every day and more, more traffic. And there, as far as I, I think I understand that that would not require coming back to the zoning board to see if you could have a crew of 12 people instead of two. So I don't think that that, like, I don't think that the intention of what you're doing on day one really is the permanent variance that, that you're asking for. I don't think we can predict that. So that, that's, that's my response to that. Thank you.
Other concerns?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm just gonna agree with Lisa on that. I mean, once it's, you know, once this is built as a factory, it's a factory. So for somebody to actually buy the plot of land and to build a house, they're gonna have to flatten the factory and then, you know, become, you know, a residential area. Also, I was just curious, like, what's the square footage on that building? I, I didn't really see it. I'm sorry.
About 30 by, about 1,500, Arvid, we can calculate.
1,500 square feet? Okay. Sorry, I just wanna write that down. You know, and that's, and that's my thing. It's like, you know, Nick does a good job. I've seen his work. So I know that he's only gonna grow. So from here, it's like, I'd say, it's just a starting point, unfortunately, as, as to like, you know, across the street from all of us on this road, which there aren't many of us, but it is, it is the fact that we kind of want it to be residential, like, you know, I'm hopefully having grandkids that'll come here someday. And the last, you know, just having factory trucks come in, come out, you know, like I said, Hilt's leaving was actually a blessing, and I love those guys too. I know them very well. But it's just, you know, I But it's just, you know, I, I, I feel like it's become kind of a residential road. And Nick, you can attest to that because we walk by your house every day. You guys walk by us. So it's just hard to see that whole side of the road become a commercial zone, you know, closer and closer to the road.
Um, do you, do the abutters have any other concerns? Um, in that case, um, I will uh call the uh public hearing to a close.
Do we, um. David first.
Do I get to respond?
And I, and David, I think uh these zoning board members need a chance to ask questions also.
Okay, can I respond?
I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead.
Do I then respond?
You have a response, Jack?
Yes, it's very brief. For Lisa, I simply point out that the same threshold, the same criteria exists in the case of any requested variance. And if anyone were to buy this place and want to do anything differently or expand it, do anything, they would have to sit in my hot seat tonight and do the same thing we're doing. It's not easy and I wouldn't expect the board to be passing these things out like popcorn. Uh, there are protections in the ordinance and I know you take it seriously, but if you're thinking about creeping commercialism, it's not the case. This is not a factory. It's anything but a factory. It's a small structure tucked away. You can't see, you can't hear. It's as benign as it gets. In my opinion, it's halfway between residential and commercial. That's not a legal definition. So I think uh I'd just like to correct the record insofar as what our plans are. Thank you.
Um, do board members want to um ask questions of the applicant?
No questions from me, Dan.
Uh, I would just like to clarify one, one statement. Uh, Lisa, yes, the minutes of the planning board at that time did say. It's rural residential. According to the planning board, at that point, it is a rural residential lot. The variance or special exception process is the zoning board process. And that is the only way that it could have been used for anything other than residential. So from the planning board viewpoint, it was a rural residential zone for that allowed use. And anything other than that would have to go to the zoning board. And as Jack said, it would have to start over. With any other use.
Uh, Martine, just, just um, for everybody's edification. If the variance were granted, it still is a rural residential zone. The variance just allows this particular use in that zone.
In that, yes. And I know people often confuse zone and use. That area is zoned rural residential. What we are talking about here is the zoning board giving a special allowance to use it for. Something other than the rural residential definition. But it does not mean the zone of that lot changes. If this business goes away, that lot is still rural residential. And as Jack said, the process starts over if someone wants to do something outside of the rural residential category.
And then let me, let me ask another question to clarify something else. If um, uh, Nick. Were to uh ex- uh desire to expand. The use of that facility, he would again have to come back before the planning board and the zoning board. Is that correct?
Yes, if there was substantial expansion, if they were to expand the building, increase the amount of traffic. Going in and out or change the type of traffic going in and out, it would trigger probably both boards.
So it's not, i- in other words, um, it, it can't be, it can't be expanded. Um, without approval of the planning board or, or without. Uh, approval of the zoning board and without regulation by the planning board.
That's correct.
Just so everybody understands that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And Jack, as, as the attorney, is that correct?
Absolutely correct. Uh, any substantial change in use, expansion, triggers site plan review. And returning before this board for a variance or special exception is the case maybe.
And even if, even if Nick were to sell that. Piece of property and somebody else decided to come in and continue the work as a wood shop. That would also be considered a change of use and they would also have to come before the.
No, I just, I disagree. I take the posture as our Supreme Court has, that a variance runs with the land. If they came in exactly what Nick is doing, exactly what he's doing, there's no change in use, in my opinion. If they expanded for the showroom, dance academy, anything else, um, they would, in my opinion, there'll be a change in use.
So how, however, our zoning ordinance, um, actually the site, site plan and review regulations. Does say that if there is a change in ownership. That it does come back for review.
I know it says that, Martine. I respectfully disagree.
Okay.
The only ordinance in North America that has that is this because.
Okay.
I'm not gonna say that now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank, thank you, Jack. A, a question that, that I have, the, the, um, that the Swansons raised was. Yes, and uh for half the year, the building is um. Uh, uh, the view of the building is, is shielded by trees. Can the building be seen in the, in the fall and the winter time, once the leaves are gone?
Tony, Tony, Tony Randall, he's here after all.
I'm here after all. No, I got the hot seat. Um, I'm just gonna tell you, I live on that street as well. I drive by there every day. This plan has minimal clearing. Um, I put together the overview with the uh Google Earth. And I went out there with my GPS unit, got GPS coordinates for people's houses so we could illustrate how far away everybody was.
Right.
I know, I know there are some softwood trees on the, uh, towards the um wise property, which is gonna help shield. I'll tell you that the building is from the right away of the road to its closest point is back a hundred feet. Okay, um, and you'll see that part of that lot out there towards the road is still owned by Michael Tulip. And that's gonna in itself create a buffer. Um. You know, when you start clearing the understory, they're not gonna clear a whole lot. So I really think it's gonna be pretty tough to uh. For them to see. I think the person that may see the most, which in probably right now, would be the Sampson property. Because their yard, if you look at the Google Earth, is very wide open and you can see on my site plan where, where the tree line comes. Oh, it's cleared over onto Mike's property. So, um, I think um vis- visibility. It really, to me, is a non-issue a little bit. I mean, you can see the, through that, uh, the coverage there. Um, but one of the, the uh ways around stuff like that is uh to have uh some plantings put in. If, if they so choose to do that. Um. I live on that road too. Um. You know, it's just, uh, it is a good neighborhood. Everybody on that road gets along. We're all good friends and everything. I don't think this is detracting from the neighborhood, of course, but I don't live right across the street from it. I'm just down around the corner a little bit from it. Um. As far as the visual thing, I think, I think we've done a good job pushing it back far enough so it's not gonna be a. Something that people are really gonna see. And I think the color of the building is gonna help, help hide it. The tone of the color of the building is gonna give it that. Uh, natural buffer because they're trying to keep it in a natural tone by the looks of those renderings that they have. So that's all I really have to offer on that.
Yeah. Um, uh, one of the, one of the concerns um that, that I think. Both of the abutters expressed, um, was a concern about increased noise from. Construction. Um, perhaps, uh, perhaps Nick could address the noise issues and whether or not. Uh, uh, measures will be taken in, in construction to um. Somehow dampen the noise.
During the construction phase of the building?
Yes.
Um, well, it'll be a metal building, so it'll go up, you know, real, real fast. Uh, once, once it arrives, it will be probably within a week of, you know, one week of erection time. To put it up, we were trying to do something that wasn't, you know, would go up, you know, relatively quickly. There's gonna be some stone wainscoting around it. So it's not like, you know, your, your big ugly metal building. Amy and I, Amy spent a lot of time trying to. Design it, you know, obviously, again, we live there. Um, it'll have stonework around the bottom to kind of blend in. With the nature of the land. Um, we're gonna put a nice wooden front on to it. So I mean, as far as noise goes, yes, I mean, I can't sit here and say that there wouldn't be any noise. Um, we'll obviously keep it between, you know, seven thirty and three, three thirty, four o'clock in the afternoon. It'll be during regular working business days. But uh, I think it'll go faster than a typical house build or anything. Due to the fact that we are bringing in a prefabricated thing and just erecting it there on site. Um, and then once it's up, then um, you know, the small stuff will be doing on the inside. It's pretty much an old warehouse and we'll just. Portify a little office space inside for, for Amy and I to work out of.
Is, 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 is the building going to be insulated?
Um, it is.
And, and will that help dampen the, the sound of saws and pounding?
I mean, I think absolutely. Uh, we will spray foam insulate the inside. Like I say, the, the current uh wood shop that I'm working out of downtown. Has absolutely zero insulation in it. But this one will have significant amount of insulation, I mean, for sound and heat purposes. We'll build something new. We'd like to keep it the most efficiently we, we can, we can do. So it will be well insulated.
Okay, thank you. Um. Uh, maybe this question is, is um. Out of uh, out of our jurisdiction, but I'll ask it anyway, and if I'm out of line, just say so. Um, but will you be using any hazardous materials in finishing, uh, for finishing? The projects that you're working on and um is there a plan for disposal of those materials?
Uh, no, we do not, uh, we do not use any hazardous materials. Uh, the only finishing of the cabinets that I make. And that I finish myself is out of latex paints. Anything, that's all I've really ever done. Um, besides that, I send those cabinets out to a finishing shop. You know, at a completely different site that we send some cabinetry off to be finished elsewhere. But I mean, the finishing I do in-house is latex paint.
And I, I, I'm, I'm assuming that you have, uh, that you will have vacuum systems to take care of sawdust and.
Yes, sir. The, the shop I currently run, we have uh two vacuums in there that are self-contained. They hook up to all my machines that draw in all the sawdust. Um, we keep it clean and tidy. Just how we operate.
Thanks, Nick.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions? Along those lines?
I don't.
Um, am I correct in saying that we should call the uh public hearing to a close? And I just wanted to thank everybody for, um, for their participation and their thoughtfulness and. Um, in their presentations and I, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next part of our process is for the board to um. Discuss what we, what we just heard from the um, from the applicant and also from the. From the abutters in terms of the um, in terms of the questions that we heard. And uh, after that discussion, um, uh, the board will vote. On each one of the, uh, on each one of the questions. Um, so I will, I will open, uh, I will open it up, uh, open it up for discussion. Uh, the application for discussion by board members.
I have a question and, and I, I think it's a question for Martine. The subject has come up about the expectation that was. Or was not established by the planning board in terms of the residential use. Uh, in this zoning. Um, Martin, could you, I mean, how long ago was this? Um, and. Do you believe that the planning board had an expectation for future residential only uses?
Okay, I believe this was, I think, back in December. It was towards the end of the year. Uh, we, the planning board approved the subdivision. Uh, separating this small lot from the larger piece owned by Michael Tulip. When, at one point, we were talking about the rural residential zone and. I know, I even went back and listened to the video. And yes, I did say that future development would be rural residential. Did I forget to say that? The zoning board could grant an exception to that rural residential. Uh, usage. Yes, I forgot to say that. But it is, at that point, we had no idea what the lot was going to be used for. Uh, it met all of the um, size and um. Frontage, et cetera, that's required in that zone. Uh, the site plan for the subdivision. Also showed all of the um setbacks on the lot. It showed where the well would fit and it showed where the septic system would fit. At that time, we had no idea what it was going to be used for.
Is that the typical, I mean, that you would go through that type of subdivision without someone saying, hey. You know, the reason we're doing this is thus and such. It's simply a land subdivision. Um.
Uh, yes, that's very typical.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on whether the spirit of the ordinance is observed?
I think they do attempt to keep the um, the rural look. About, about that property. Uh, it's. It is not an overtly in-your-face commercial establishment. Uh. I do believe it, it does address the spirit of the ordinance.
What about a resident who moves into an area that's zoned rural residential? Do they have an expectation um for future development that's consistent with that designation? Or, or not? Um, do, do you have an expectation that can be easily overturned? Uh, I mean, as a member of the, the ZBA, I mean, I, I take seriously promises that have been made. Or expectations that have been set or expectations that are implied in, in the setting of zoning regulations. Um, I, I have a tough time seeing where the spirit is being followed here.
In the, in the zoning ordinance, rural residential, the. Definition says, this zone provides for low to medium density rural living, open space. And the protection of environmentally sensitive areas such as wetlands, floodplains, poor soils and steep slopes. And it has a list of uses that are permitted. It ranges anywhere from single and two-family dwellings to uh. Mobile home, cluster developments, multi-family dwellings. mobile home, cluster developments, multifamily dwellings. And as, and as was stated by Mr. McCormick, also would include agricultural, forestry and farming uses. It's quite a wide variety of things.
But specifically does not say commercial uses.
No, and that's why we are here at the zoning board.
Yeah, it doesn't say, it doesn't say commercial uses. I, I, I think, uh, you know, Mr. McCormick made the statement that there is, there is mixed use of that land in that area. So that, um, apparently somebody from across the street had a business. And Mike Latula, whose property this was once a part of, also runs a, um, also runs a commercial business out of there. The, the fact, but apparently neither one of those businesses really impacts the neighbors in, in a way that, that we might expect other commercial businesses to do. I mean, that the, the, the two of butters said that they really don't see Mike. They don't hear anything from Mike's property. They don't even know what's there. So I, I think our question, this zoning board is, does this particular, is this particular commercial use invasive in that it's going to increase traffic? It's going to increase noise? Is it going to be visible to neighbors? Or is this really just a a use that we, you might compare to an agricultural use, which, which would probably be more invasive than what this is. I think Jack made that point, so. That's the decision point that I'm looking at in terms of, of saying whether, whether this meets the spirit of the ordinance or not and I feel that, I feel that it, it, it does. There may be some minor increase in traffic. I don't see noise being a problem, especially if the building is insulated and that the use is basically doing the small projects that support his, his larger commercial venture.
Well, there, there are follow-up, um, and maybe again, it's with Mardine and I don't, I don't know if she knows the answer to this question, but it, it's a question on my mind. Has this always been rural residential zoning? And was, what was the intent of, uh, it becoming rural residential zoning as opposed to commercial zoning, given that, you know, we all acknowledge it's a pretty mixed-use area?
Uh, I, I don't know. The zoning came in in the eighties. I wasn't involved with land use at that time at all. Obviously, it is a very rural look area, very heavily treed. I would assume it has been for a long time. I, why that, why the particular lines were drawn between particular zones, I don't know. I think it was primarily to respect the nature of the land at that time.
I, I, I think we should also mention too, that Albrook is a scenic highway. It's Ashland's only scenic highway. Didn't come up in the discussion, but it is, and it's, it's recognized as that and recognized by L R P C as a, as a scenic highway. So, you know, one of the questions we should be asking is, is that going to impact the scenic highway? And I don't see that it is, but anyway. Question, uh, question two or question three is granting the ordinance would do substantial justice. I, I have to thank Jack for, uh, stating the law here because this is not an easy question to to answer. And the, and the decision point is whether or not the, the, the use, whether the loss to the individual is outweighed by the gain, by a gain for the public. I'm, I'm not sure that this is even, uh, this is even a relevant question to ask in this particular case. I think the, the argument was that this could not be sold as a, uh, as a residential lot. Because of where it is. And I can't, I, I personally can't make that decision. Whether or not it could be sold as a residential one. You know, I, I have no factual basis to judge that. I, I, you know, I, I think that that really depends on the real estate market and whether somebody wanted to buy that particular piece of land as a residence, knowing that Mike had a commercial operation basically right next door. But people buy strange pieces of property. People buy houses in very strange places. So I'm, I'm not sure that that argument really holds here. Both, uh, both of the butters had questions about whether this would decrease the property value or not. We, we sort of heard arguments on both sides and we don't really have an official evaluation of that. And maybe that's something that we, we would like as a planning board before we make a decision on this. Simply because of the concern of, of the, of the butters, we certainly don't want their property value decreased in any way by this particular project.
Well, I think you have to ask the question of what happens when you open this door? Do you create a precedent that jeopardizes the rural residentialness of the properties in the area? You know, i- it's hard to put the genie back in the bottle sometimes. You know, i- if you're gonna call something rural residential and you're gonna give out variances to operate commercial business, a commercial business, well, it probably won't be long until there's another commercial business or like you say, well, they have to go back to the planning board, uh, you know, if they want to expand, but now can you really put the genie back in the bottle at that point?
I, I, I think that's a valid concern. I'm not sure if it has anything to do with property values, but.
Well, if you're.
Do you feel about the, what do you feel about property values? Is this, do you, do you think this project really could affect the property values? Or is it, is the impact of this so minimal that it really doesn't have any, any impact on property value whatsoever?
I, I think it raises a question for any residential future sale as to what type of neighborhood are you buying into? And, um, to the extent that someone is looking to buy a, a residence, I, I think there is a value to being in a residential zone that's protected. So, uh, I, I, I think it can, you know, I, I don't know, I, I couldn't put a value on it, but I, I think it's part of a consideration that all residential property owners in the area will have to consider.
Susan just commented that there is no guarantee when you buy a piece of property in a rural residential zone that it will only be residential. You know, it, I actually, I live on Smithville Road, right across the road, about less than a hundred yards away is my neighbor's wood shop. My neighbor John ran a, had a, had a, a building business and he had his, he had his wood shop next door over there. I can actually see the wood shop. And, uh, but I've never heard him, uh, I've never heard him building anything over there. And I know he's built a lot of stuff over there. He stores equipment over there, but I can't see the equipment because the building blocks that. And, um, I'm not sure that it, uh, I'm not sure whether it impacts, um, my property values or, or not. I would, I would guess maybe not, um, but I, I have no idea. Susan?
Yeah, my comment was actually that there's no guarantee that residential use is going to be less noisy, have less traffic or that you're necessarily gonna get a good neighbor because it's their house. Um, I moved out of a shooting gallery. I mean, several times a week, there was an hour more of gun shooting, which at least at this woodworking shop, you would not have to. So I mean, I, there, there aren't the, the inference that a, a, a house is somebody's home and it's always gonna be quiet and whatever else. And again, having lived with teenagers and next to teenagers and a lot of noisy cars that are parked in the driveway and going up and down the street all the time. It's not always that residential automatically equals the quietude and the, um, that you're seeking when you look to a house in a rural residential zone.
We, we play to expectations. And, you know, i- you move into a residential zone because yes, you may, you may get a, a nasty neighbor with a barking dog. But a- at least you don't expect a factory, uh, to pop up next to you. And also I think it's important to the credibility of the planning board that the planning board sets expectations for operating in the town, particularly commercially. And when the planning board is, is, is on record as having established an expectation, i- it's like a, a precedent in a judicial case. Uh, you have to really think hard about overturning it because it's, it's become established in the expectation of the community. I, from the comments, I glean that that may have been the case when, you know, whether that was intended or not, i- it's something that happened. And, and I don't think it's inappropriate. I, I, I think you want the planning board to provide that type of guidance. But we've got to be very careful that we're, we're consistent in, in, in applying that, that type of expectation.
All right. Well, I just want to comment about the role of the planning board here. The expectation is set in the zoning ordinance, which is voted in by the residents of the town. The planning board has to follow those. And that's why is there's a zoning board, that a planning board cannot waive or change anything in the zoning ordinance. But because the zoning ordinance cannot be a one-size-fits-all, particularly with properties that were existed prior to the zoning coming in, that that's what a zoning board of adjustment has to deal with. The, the planning board, on the other hand, with site plan regulations and everything, deals primarily with commercial and multifamily and nothing, nothing to do with residential, other than the original subdivisions that might create development somewhere. It's, it's not up to the planning board to make those decisions. I think the statement was simply that the question was if this lot was subdivided, uh, subdivided off a grandfathered commercial enterprise, would it also automatically be grandfathered as a commercial enterprise? And the answer was no. It was created as a new lot under the zoning ordinance of the day, which clearly stated that it was rural residential. And the primary uses are in the zoning ordinance. And then, of course, the only way to, oh, to change that is to go to the zoning board to request a variance or special exception.
And the, and the zoning, our zoning ordinances provides for variances.
I, I appreciate that we have a lot of power in this. Okay, but I think that a, a good zoning board restricts their use of, of that power. Uh, particularly when the community has created expectations. And I think that's the situation we're in.
Just one, one comment, David. If the zoning board were to grant the variance and the project were then to move to the planning board, the planning board does have authority to set conditions. Just leave it at that.
We still haven't answered the question about property values.
Right.
Do we want, and do we want a, a more authoritative analysis about the impact on property values or are we, or are we satisfied that this project will not impact property values?
I, I think it's on the answer question.
Yeah, I, I don't feel it would make a substantial difference either way. I don't think that is the ma- I don't think that is the major issue with this particular project.
Okay. Owing to the, the special conditions of the premises that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance will result in an unnecessary, oh, we discussed that one already, didn't we?
Oh, it's the next one that we need to look at.
No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general pu- general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to this property.
Yeah. And then that goes along with the second, the next one down, proposed use is a reasonable one. Those two go together.
Okay. Any discussion on those at all?
This is, this is one that I always have problems getting my words straight. I don't think the I do feel it is a reasonable use of the property. And I don't believe that it is an extreme, it has an extreme impact, negative impact on the butters. I do believe it's fairly balanced.
Yeah, I think the argument here is, is, um, we want to protect from a misuse or overuse of the property. This is, in this case, I, I, I would agree with you, Mardine, that, yeah, even though this is a commercial use, it is a minimal, the impact of that use is, is minimal to the property. There's no environmental harm here. There's no impact or very little impact to the, to anyone's view shed here. There's not really a substantial. There's not really a substantial. Increase in noise or traffic. And. I, I think for those reasons, it's, it's a reasonable use.
Yeah, my comment would be that the, um, the, the abutters have gone out of their way in this instance to. Somewhat unanimously indicate that. They disagree. And I, I, I think it's always important to factor that in to the consideration. Um, you, you might feel one way, I might feel a different way. But I, I think the abutters are going to have to live with this and, and I think they had their, their point of view and, and. Their opinion ne- needs to be weighed considerably, given that they fairly unanimously have opposed this.
Yeah, I, I. I wrote down their concerns because, you know, I, I agree with you, Charlie, that. The, the opinions of abutters really matter. There, it, it's really important. Lisa was concerned about noise. She was concerned about traffic. She was concerned about property values. And I think she felt, and, and this was a point that you brought up too, Charlie. Concerns me. In that the land was subdivided. In November and then all of a sudden it now becomes. A commercial use and I wonder whether the subdivision was for that use in the first place. And that wasn't made clear during the subdivision. But. Anyone could subdivide their property for any reason that they want and. That's. That's not really something that goes into our, our decision making. Oh, they were also concerned about expansion. And so I think we addressed all of those questions. I mean, I asked, I asked those questions about. Expansion and we, we learned that they can't really expand without approval of the ZBA and the planning board. If the property is sold. Whoever buys it unless they are, are running exactly the same business there. Would have to, at least according to Jack, would have to go to, would have to go back to the ZBA and, and, and the planning board for approval of any other. Different commercial use of that land. So I don't, and, and even if Nick wants to expand his operation there, he also has to. Go through that same process. So there is a process in place to protect the abutters there.
Does that process have a threshold? I mean, Nick says it's him and a helper. Uh, if they add one more person, do they have to come back? If he decides to work overtime, is that an expansion? Uh, does he have to come back? Uh, how is that defined? And I guess is it's not easily defined.
Yeah, I think, Margie.
There, there are certain things that, again, the planning board, there are certain ways. To mitigate various issues, the planning board can, as just an example. Planning board can, it can, uh, set some parameters and hours of operation. That type of thing.
Yeah, and I, I think.
But right, but right now I am not sitting here as a planning board member, sitting here as a zoning board member.
I ask questions about noise and whether, whether the building would be insulated. And from my own experience, living right next to a wood shop. And never hearing noise, even when things are open in the summertime. I'm, uh, John probably has more equipment in, in his wood shop over here than Nick is going to have in his. I, I think there will be an increase in traffic. Obviously, if he's getting deliveries and he's working in there, he's going to be in and out of, there's going to be deliveries in and out. Is that a substantial increase? You know, is that like heavy truck traffic going up and down Albrook? I don't think so. You know, to, you know, making big deliveries and, and making big shipments. I think this is basically a, if a small fifteen hundred foot wood shop and. It, it's not going to have that kind of, uh, impact. So. I think, I, I, I think we answered the questions about the, the abutters concerns. At least I'm satisfied with that. You may not be, Charlie, that's, you know.
I think we said enough.
Yeah. Is there any more discussion on any of these issues? Is everybody ready to vote at this time?
I do need to clarify something you said at the beginning of the meeting, David. A number of votes. We have three zoning board members here. We will need to agree. We will need to have three positive votes on everything.
Oh, we will.
Yes, not two. It's not a majority. It's got to be three.
Ah, okay, I, I'm sorry, I, I. Was Jack aware of that?
No.
Is that, do you agree with that, Jack?
I, I think you're correct. I didn't realize that was the case though. I thought, I thought, based upon the conversation at the outset. And my client did too, that two of us agree with the answer in this case.
Well, I'm looking at the. New Hampshire OSI handbook for this, uh, Board of Adjustment. And it does say. Let's see, legislator codify this principle in twenty eighteen with revisions to RSA six seventy four colon thirty three roman numeral three. Whereas the prior version of the statute required three votes to reverse administrative action. Or to approve an application, it was silent on denials. As now drafted, three concurring votes are required, quote, to take any action in any manner on which it is required to pass.
I just looked at that a long time, so.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry too, Jack, I, I apologize because.
It's all in good faith. We're all here in good faith, trying to do the right thing. And the problem is we don't do this tonight. There may not be a court for quite a while, I'm, I'm afraid.
Although I do think, i- i- am I mistaken in saying that it is the applicant's right to have? More board members?
You were correct, yes.
Is it safe to assume that the plan, the ZBA is having some issues, gave people on the board, it may be several months before we can get a full, a full board?
We have only one other person who is. Not here tonight, so we have only four people on the board.
So we have to obtain three of four as opposed to three of three. For positive votes, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, we don't know if that person will come next meeting. Is that safe to assume?
That's, I don't know.
It's safe to assume.
Maybe, yeah.
My question is, would we be required to do this entire exercise one more time? Or would we incorporate that reference for the current tonight?
Pretty sure you, you have to start over.
I'm trying to think, if we continue. Jack, I may need help on this. We've closed the hearing.
Right.
If we continue the meeting to a set date, time and location.
Right. You can vote, you can vote, in my opinion, you can vote to come out of your deliberative session. And you could continue the meeting for further, uh, for the discussion and further argument.
And if, and if that fourth member were to be at that continued meeting.
Right.
Would that person then deliberate and vote?
Uh, in my opinion, yes, would that person have access to the state?
Yes, oh, yes.
So that person can walk into that meeting as if they were here tonight?
Yeah.
With no loss of traction.
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to confer with my clients briefly because there were timing issues, because obviously. Um, time is very important. I'd like to go off the record for one second, please.
Okay, sure.
I think the other option would be to apply for a rehearing. If, if we. Did not all agree.
Yeah, um, I'm going, let's see. Let me look to see who's on. Okay. Who's listening, I just need to.
Thank you, folks. After brief deliberation, would simply say that my team, more than willing to understand where it occurred. And, um, have no objection to your coming out of this session. Continuing to a date and time certain, and we're picking up the pieces that. Again, I'm, I'm so sorry this occurred, uh, we all acted in good faith.
Yeah.
Well, I, I feel it was my.
You're, yeah, you're only, your, your other option would be to. Go with whatever we decide tonight and then request a rehearing.
That's right. I'd rather not do that. Frankly, I'm not sure that that's a good grounds for rehearing, but that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. Uh, when could we continue this? Before we make a motion?
Our next meeting is in a month. But I think we would probably need to. Need to rehear the, or I'd like to rehear this as soon as possible, just because.
I agree.
Because we made the error, I made the error, so. I would, I would suggest that we, we find out when Alan, when we can all, all four of us meet. And Alan can be prepared.
What, what we need to do though is tonight decide on a time and date. That's how we continue it. Otherwise, we have to post and notice. If we don't decide on a date tonight.
Right.
And we decide some other ti- we leave the meeting and then talk to Alan. Decide on a date, then we have to repost and renotice everybody.
Right, that's correct.
With the, with the appropriate timeframe. But if we continue, if we vote to continue it tonight and set that date and time. To which we will continue it, then we do not have to repost.
Well, typically our meetings are on Thursdays.
Yes.
But we, but the planning board meets on Wednesday and this is, this is.
Yeah.
Kind of part of the planning board meeting, so.
Either, either way, doesn't make any, doesn't have. We just have to pick a date.
Could we?
Doesn't have to fit our either board schedule, a normal schedule.
I don't even know what my calendar looks like. Could we meet again next Wednesday?
The fourteenth?
Right.
I'm available.
Is that good for you, Charlie?
Uh, I have no objection to that.
Fourteenth?
Okay.
At six thirty?
At six thirty. And we will arrange the Zoom information. We'll get that set up tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Okay, okay. Okay, David, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this meeting. To April fourteenth, which is next Wednesday at six thirty. With the Zoom. Access information being arranged tomorrow. And communicated to everybody.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Margie?
Yes.
Says I, Charlie says I, David says I.
Thank you, thank you very much, everybody here.
Okay. So then. The planning board, excuse me, will not. Determine it's the application before the planning board until we know the decision from the zoning board. And we'll follow that.
Well, well, we reconvene, are you still in deliberation? And Mr. Silly will simply jump in to do that, having seen the tape? Or are we back in a session where there is discussion or is it public input?
I would say we are in deliberation.
I think you are now.
Yes, we are now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thank you all very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Jack.
Good night, guys. Thanks, thanks again.
Thank you.
So do we, now we have to come out of our meeting? Or, or do we?
Yes, you can.
Because we continued.
You're can, we are continuing the deliberation.
Right.
But this meeting is adjourned.
Okay.
Yeah. I think that's, yeah.
Okay.
Continued to the next, yeah.
So this meeting is, the, this meeting, ZBA is adjourned at eight sixteen.
Okay.
And I'll say goodnight to everybody.
Thank you.
Night, Charlie.
Okay, take care.
Okay. And if, if the planning board could hold to, could stay for a few minutes.
All right.
Okay, uh, we will. Is next Wednesday going to be all right with? Paula and Kathleen? As far as I'm concerned, yes. Okay. Can I ask who's on iPhone? Is that? Is that you, Paula?
No.
No.
I'm on computer.
Okay, yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
Who's on iPhone?
I don't know.
It's not me. I'm on my computer desk now.
Yeah, okay, okay, so we will pick this up. Next Wednesday at six thirty. I'll get information out to everybody.
How is this going to be a joint meeting?
Yes, it will. It will again. Because we have to be prepared just in case. We have to be prepared depending on what decision the zoning board makes.
Okay.
So that we can pick it up.
Somebody, the statute changed like not too long ago. Is that what?
For the voting, for the voting? Yeah, it has to be three. Positive votes. Yeah, it's not, zoning board is not a majority of who's there.
That's what it is.
Yeah, it's, it's not a majority vote, it's, it has to have, it has to have three votes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what, not, not the majority.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, um, any, Susan, any updates that we need to be aware of?
Now, I guess, I guess there's been some back and forth correspondence about the water runoff issue that.
Yeah.
Really isn't our concern, other than having done some research as to. Whether there were. Stormwater management plans in place that this, this is violating in some way. Craig is actually.
Craig is actually following up on some of it, so.
Yes. As as long as everyone realizes it really is a simple matter between the two abutters, between the two parties.
Yeah. And I, yeah, I have to, I had to remind Craig as well in my last email that
Yes.
It's trespassing, no matter who you are and how, what you are intentioned to go investigate these things on land without the property owner being aware of it or giving you permission.
Yeah.
And I also kind of stressed that communication-wise, it would certainly help to have the property owner with you while you're doing it for a better understanding of what's going on.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. So now, we need to step, we need to step back on that issue.
Yes, I I, I think, I think people think the planning board is all seeing, all powerful. And I think that came out tonight. We, our duties, I mean, our powers are defined by statute, and we can't speculate or hypothesize or question ordinances that were voted on forty years ago.
Nope.
We have to deal with what's in front of us at the time.
Yeah. Oh, Kathleen, at your last Purlak meeting, was there something that related to Ashland?
Oh, yes, it was that, um,
Anything we need to be aware of?
No, that was a DES permit that the engineers seemed to be confused with
Okay, okay.
Um, yeah, it was Island Drive, which is not even remotely near
Okay.
The Penny.
Okay, okay. Yeah. Okay, anything else for tonight?
Nick, Nick, who?
I will get you his last name. I'll get you the right spelling. And I'll send, I'll, I'll send you a list of all the names that I had.
Okay. Um, and also, in that email, please tell me the proper turnaround time to get everything all set to to Wednesday. Just let me know on email.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, if nothing else, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.